Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, December 19th, 1 o'clock meeting of the City Council, Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. And it is now little after 1 o'clock, and we will call, we are called to order, and we will do the flag salute first, and maybe Richard Kite can lead us in the flag salute.
I would love to, if you would all please stand and follow me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Ira, they did a great job, we'll have them all back next week.
Sounds good, okay, you're all invited. Okay, now we'll move on to roll call, and Kristy?
Councilmember Kite?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hobart?
Here.
And Mayor Smotrich?
I'm here, thank you. And before I go on with anything, because we have a busy schedule today, I just wanted to make a very quick announcement, because we're, it's gonna be very low-key, we're not doing anything special, but today is our city manager and our leader's birthday, his 21st birthday. But we're not gonna do any other acknowledgements about it, so. All right, we are moving on, first of all, we are, have a couple of presentations, and the first one is going to be from our animal Samaritans, and I'll get the microphone, and we'll come down there, and you can tell us all about your little pooch. Well, welcome to our meeting, and who is this little beauty here? First of all, tell us who you are.
I'm Jeanette from Loving All Animals, and this is Louis, he's a little eight-year-old Pomeranian that unfortunately was surrendered to us, and he's looking for a new home.
He is beautiful, and I don't think he'll have any problem finding a home, he's got a little bit of whiteness on his paws, and he's just got a sweet, sweet face. So, I have a little something for him, and I thank you so much for bringing him, needless to say, something that we all say, and something Dana started, actually, was bringing all these wonderful pets that are available for adoption to our city council meeting, because everyone needs a little bit more love in their life, and this is the best way to, to get it. So if you don't already have a Christmas present for yourself, or a Hanukkah, or Kwanzaa, or Chinese New Year gift, this might be a good little present for yourself, and bring a lot more love in your life. So tell us what your telephone number is, and tell us a little bit more about your facility. Let me give you the microphone.
Our phone number is 760-834-7000, or you can go to our website at lovingallanimals.org. Our mission statement is to rescue animals from county and city shelters, any, that are in the line of euthanasia, and get them ready for adoption, and make sure they're adoptable, and find them new forever homes.
So as I have said many times, these little sweet critters come in all sizes, in all shapes, in all ages, and with all levels of energy. So if you'd like a little quiet one, you could have no problem finding them, and if you want more, that's, one that's more energetic, they're available too. So please don't hesitate to come by and treat yourself to a new family member. And I have a little something, it's, it's, and I hope he will like it, don't wanna scare him, but something to take home and play with, and thank you so much for bringing him. Thank you, and happy holidays to you. Take care. Yes, sir.
There's a point that maybe you could also make, a lot of people don't know, in Rancho Mirage, you can legally have three dogs. So somebody who has two and didn't know that may be interested in contacting or in getting the third one. I have three, and I can tell you, it's just no problem at all. There is a little problem, of course, but it's worth every bit of it, to have such a wonderful third dog, so, three's a lucky number.
Three is certainly a lucky number, and we're thrilled that you have been able to more than step up to the plate for the years. And all through the years, you have, have started out very often with, I think, fostering pets, and then all of a sudden, they're part of your family.
A fast story, somebody from Loving All Animals asked my wife and me if we would hold this fluffy white dog for two weeks while she went somewhere and then came back. So we said, okay, we would do that. And then, on that very day, my wife and I put the dog in the car, and we were gonna take her over to get fluffed up and washed and bathed and try to find a home for her. And the, as I was backing the car out of our driveway, the dog started shaking, and pretty violently so. And we started going forward, and the dog was like losing consciousness. We thought, well, we clearly can't take her to get bathed, so we ended up taking her over to our vets. And the vet looked at her, and he said, this happens occasionally, but it's not a bad situation, blah, blah, blah. So we then brought her back home, and waited for the lady to come and pick up the dog two weeks later. Well, the thing that we hadn't contemplated was how smart the dog was, because as I say, when we were backing out of the driveway, the dog was shaking. Finally, the dog went totally unconscious, and that's when we took her to the vet. And so we figured, what do you do now? I mean, the lady's gotta come back and get her dog, we've got two already. And the lady didn't come back and get her dog after two weeks. And in that period of time, we decided, well, then we're, we're gonna have to keep the dog. And so we made that decision, unless we could find an owner. And it turned out that the dog was very clever. The dog didn't have a seizure at all, I'm convinced it was totally fake, because she spent the next several days playing with our two dogs, and we have a nice fenced yard, grass, and two dogs, I mean, she knew what she was doing. She wanted to stay, didn't want, didn't wanna leave, and that was seven years ago. And she welcomes me at home every night, so, stories like that are what you can have by adding one more dog to, to your family.
Thank you, Dana. And of course, we're all very pet-friendly in Rancho Mirage, and especially up here on the dais, and a lot of things people don't know about is the ability that we have to help people adopt a pet, and we are able to provide up to $300 for the adoption and the initial pet care at the vet. So it doesn't get much better than that, and if you need to have a little more love in your life, that's certainly one of the best ways that you can do it. And what's interesting is, I was raving a few weeks ago to, to gentlemen at an event about how wonderful our dog park was, and yesterday I got a note from them, and they said that even though they didn't bring their pet with them, they went over to the dog park, and now they know why I was raving about the dog park. They went in and they met all the people, and they met all the pets, and they were thrilled to acquire a new place to hang out with their pet, and were so thankful that now they knew about our dog park. And as you can see it on the screen, we take a lot of pride in maintaining it, and making sure that all the pets are safe, and the people have a good time, and with all the available amenities that we can provide. So now if you get a new pet, you know right where you can take them, and meet lots of new people and lots of new pet friends. So, thank you so much, and thank you, Dana.
Great subject.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to another great subject, and that is the recognition of service for someone very special on our staff, and that is William, otherwise known as Bill Enos, and he is our city engineer, and he is going to be retiring, and he is in the front area here, so I'll give it over to Isaiah, and...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so Bill Enos, after 22 years with the city of Rancho Mirage, is moving into the next phase of his life, his well-earned retirement. Anytime we have an employee that's contributed so much to the city over such a significant period of time, it's really hard to put into words the impact of that. And these occasions are always bittersweet, you know, you hate to lose a resource like that, when you have to run a city and an organization. One of the things that I appreciated most about Bill is his thoroughness, and I knew if it cleared Bill's review, it was right. And there were many times you get into very tough situations, and an analysis has to be correct, and I knew when Bill was involved, I could walk in his office, and if he gave me the thumbs up, or the "it's okay, Isaiah," I knew I could publicly go and present that information. You know, obviously, moving on into retirement, he's, he's put in many, many, many years of service, and many long hours, and he's given up a lot of time with his family, and weekends, and there's stresses involved, so we're very happy for him that he gets to enjoy this next phase of his life with his family, but we will definitely miss him around here. This last Tuesday was his final management meeting, so as you start to encounter those benchmarks, it kinda has reality setting into it. So, Bill, why don't you come on up while we say a few words about you?
Okay.
So let's load up the PowerPoint. So that was just this week, we had a retirement lunch for Bill at City Hall, we had a lot of people come, including staff and outside consultants that have spent years working with Bill, and we just had a great time and kinda got to reflect on Bill and his time here with the city, and after 22 years, you know, him being able to look back on a long, proud career with the city. And, you know, when you think about it, 22 years, and, you know, being the city engineer, a very important position, anytime you're dealing with any development, anything with a roadway, and we kinda started to put together a list of projects, and there were just so many in the 22-year history of, of the city. So what we did is to kinda show the significance and the level of impact Bill's had on the community, is to show you the development that's happened in Rancho Mirage during Bill's tenure. So the picture on the left is from when Bill started with the city, and then the picture over the right is a current picture of the city. And you can see the staunch differences within the community, and I guarantee you that Bill was a part of each and every one of those projects that came through. And part of the reason Rancho Mirage stands out is it's a very beautiful community, our streets and roads are maintained at the highest levels, along with our parks, it's people like Bill Enos behind the scenes that put in a lot of time and effort to get that result. So, thank you, Bill, for all of that work you did for us. Obviously, the, the, the big projects that we have, that Bill was directly involved with, you know, you kinda look through the history of the city, we have some significant landmarks in the city with the river, Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center, the rehab of that, it is now a very beautiful center, the median roadwork, all that had Bill's hands on it, the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, as the mayor just mentioned, our beautiful parks, recently our wonderful dog park, and that is definitely one of the most well-designed dog parks that you'll find in the Coachella Valley, from the design elements that went into that project that make it a better functioning dog park, with some of the common issues that sometimes you run into at dog parks. And then obviously, I think, a very significant contributing factor to the aesthetics of our community was the undergrounding of utility lines. Bill was a very key component of that big project, and that was a massive undertaking by the city, and Bill was directly involved with that. And then when we got into the road projects, there were too many miles to count over those 22 years. So, Bill, we just want to thank you for all your service to the city, you've been a great employee, we are going to miss you around here, so don't be a stranger, but we're very happy that you're moving on to your well-earned retirement, and you've done a great job for us, and I for one will definitely miss you around here. So, Jesse, do you wanna add a few words?
Thank you, Isaiah. I get the pleasure of working with Bill on a day-to-day basis, and one thing I can say about Bill is that he cares about the city. So when some type of development or project comes in, Bill doesn't look at the project from a standpoint of, how do we expedite, how do we get this out the, the easiest way possible, but Bill really takes a personal interest in it, and his, his goal's always been to protect and enhance the city. So from a staff perspective, I can appreciate that, there's gonna be some very large shoes to fill, we're going to miss you, and another thing that we're gonna miss is, anytime a project comes up, and I don't maybe have the history on it, I can go to Bill's office, and if it's happened within the last 30 years, I can get a 10-minute dissertation on who owned the property, which developer sold it, what plans went into the property, and that's just something that we're not gonna be able to replace with you. Bill, that historical knowledge has been invaluable to the city, we appreciate your service and everything that you've done, and you will truly be missed here, so we wish you and your family the very best in retirement, and thank you for all that you've done.
So Jesse, you wanna join me down front, and we'll give Bill's flag? So this is what 22 years feels like, Bill. Can you get a picture, Karen?
It was here.
Hey, Joseph, go get Marcus.
We have some engineering staff in the audience, could you guys come down and join us in the picture?
Get your picture taken.
Jeez, would you guys relate that?
You going sideways?
[laughter]
Oh, in the middle, okay.
We're not that far. [laughter] what they said's true. The, before I, I have just a short, short remarks, but before I do, I'd like to have my, my wife and son and daughter have come to support me today. Karen, would you stand with my wife Karen? My son David, and daughter Heather. Thank you. You know, one of the greatest things about working at a small city like Rancho Mirage is the opportunity to interact directly with the council, with the directors of the departments, and each staff member of the different departments, in the, every day, and doing the work that we do, and I valued, I've truly valued my relationship with each one of you, council members and directors of the departments, and each member of the staff, our city departments, from finance, planning, to our field staff, to our, all groups in the city, we all work together, and that's the great thing about it, it's a real team here at the city of Rancho Mirage. Special thanks to my engineering team, most of our here today, Leland Cole, Chuck Kahn, Jeff Benson, Dusty Knapp, and Cindy Stoddard, who I work with every single day, and we move a lot of product through our office, and, and we're pretty excited about that. You know, I'll miss the day-to-day interaction and contact with the dedicated staff here in the dynamic team environment that we have, at the same time, I'm really excited for my new life with my partner, my wife, of 34 years, and I really look forward to the next 34 years and going forward with her. City of Rancho Mirage has a very bright future, and I've honored, and I'm honored to have been a small part of its successful past. Thank you.
Thank you again, Bill, you have been a crucial part of this city, and we are gonna miss you, but we're excited for your new chapter in your life. Thank you. Okay, so now we will move on to another presentation, and this is gonna be done by the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, it's gonna be an update, and we have some, a couple people to handle this, and it's Eric Arnelas, Chamber Board Member and Communications and Public Affairs Coordinator at the Annenberg Foundation, he's the Trust at Sunnylands, and our wonderful Executive Director, Katie Steis, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Smotrich, Mayor Protem Hobart, and council members and staff, it's great to be here, thank you so much for having us. Today, we're not representing Sunnylands today, but more so the Chamber, and I just wanted to, as a board member, thank you so much for your continued support of the Chamber. There's been a lot of excitement over the past year that I've been with, with the Chamber, around the events that are happening with the Chamber and the business community here, and a lot of that success, of course, we are, is the result of Katie's efforts, and Rhonda Henry as well, and, and all of our ambassadors, and all the hard work that goes into it, but of course, we couldn't do any of that without your support, so on behalf of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, I wanna say thank you. I also would like to introduce Katie, who is going to give you a report on our activities.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and guests that are here today, my name's Katie Steis, your new President/CEO for Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, and we have just a quick overview of this past year, we promise we won't take too long, but if we can start the PowerPoint, we're just gonna go through our year at a glance, because it was a really successful year, there's a lot to celebrate indeed. Let's see how this works. Oh, perfect, we're gonna start with our incredible networking mixers. Each month, a different business is highlighted and featured, it's a great marketing opportunity for so many of our members to gather, it's really a great atmosphere that encourages networking and business to be done, and then of course, who doesn't want to experience one of our incredible restaurants in Rancho Mirage? Our power lunches are a really great economic powerhouse, not only does it bring 40 to 50 people in to lunch at a member location where they pay that restaurant directly, so it pays for their membership dues, but it creates a really great atmosphere for building deep relationships. Mixers are a lot more casual, whereas these power lunches, people are sitting together, and for 45 minutes to an hour, actually having lunch, talking about their business, their resources, vendors that they use, or how they can leverage one another's relationships to build business. Next are our Business Over Breakfast and Educational Workshops, those are held at Aqua California Bistro, and I thought I saw John Shea here. Those have been a really wonderful educational opportunity, they'll cover everything from sexual harassment and bullying prevention trainings, which are now mandatory by law, annual new tax law updates, and of course, labor law updates, including marketing as well, building up boards of directors, and so on. The educational series are great, because we see that a lot of businesses are so focused on what they offer, that we need to step up and help them with the things that they need to know throughout the year, and keeping them abiding by new laws that are happening. Membership kickstarts are more of a membership orientation, so our Chamber has undergone so much change this year, that we really wanted to talk directly with our members about who we are, what we offer, and how they can leverage the Chamber to build their business. And so through those membership kickstarts, we cover all of the benefits, we take the guesswork out, and really help them build a plan of involvement through the entire year, and then of course, we've had 20-plus ribbon cuttings throughout the year, a lot more to come next year, Rancho Mirage is growing, and we're really excited to be a part of that growth. Moving on to our flagship events, Rancho Mirage State of the City, we had almost 300 attendees this past year, where Richard Kite gave an update to leaders and influences throughout the Coachella Valley, about everything happening in Rancho Mirage, past, present, and future. Next, of course, is the Rammies Outstanding Business Awards and Installation Dinner. We had about 280 attendees this last year, and we have outgrown that space, we're proud to say that we'll still be at Aguale Caliente, but we'll be in a ballroom where we can hold upwards of 300 people, we're really excited about that growth. Some of the honorees this year include Nonprofit of the Year, United Cerebral Palsy of the Inland Empire, Medium Business of the Year, Elephant Car Wash, Large Business of the Year, Omni Rancho Las Palmas, Rising Star Award, Preservation Rancho Mirage, Heart of Rancho Mirage Award goes to Eisenhower Health, and then our Barbara Sinatra Distinguished Citizen of the Year Award goes to Helene Galen. We're really excited to honor these folks this year, and look forward to seeing you there. Next, another flagship event is our Desert Nurses Appreciation Luncheon, we had about 250 attendees at that, celebrating our largest employer and probably the hardest workers that we all know. Taste of Rancho Mirage this summer was really special, about 3,800 wristbands went out into the community and really drove business for that, what we call a five-week food fest throughout the summertime. It was great for our local restaurants, it was really special for the visitors and residents who were here as well, and including nonprofit organizations who are also able to fundraise. Another item before we get to the Health, Wealth, and Wellness Expo is we are working on a possible A&amp;A kickoff mixer, we would love to help bring the A&amp;A more attention by doing a really large-scale mixer, so we're working on that. And then of course, the Health, Wealth, and Wellness Expo replaced our Block Party this year, it was held at the West End Mission Hills, and we had filled up the entire event space with 70-plus booths and had over 500 attendees. This was a real home run for the business community and for the Chamber, really brought together a lot of folks, and what was special about it, it was directly business to consumer, that's a great opportunity for every business. The next expo that we have coming up, because our members keep asking for them, we really wanna celebrate Rancho Mirage's Design District that we're so well-known for, by offering a Desert Living Home Expo this spring. We chose the spring because it's the height of season, when the majority of people are here. I just did a walkthrough at the Omni Rancho Las Palmas, that's where it'll be held, we will fill up another ballroom, and again, we'll be reaching out to the community to attend that event, and it's another opportunity where businesses can work right with the consumers. We also chose this because we haven't really seen a successful home expo out here in the Coachella Valley, so we find it's a great opportunity to offer to our membership. This is, as far as membership and retention goes, I'm really, really proud to say that we're ending the year with a net positive 60 members, bringing our membership number up to 380 members, so we're getting up towards, and we'll pass that 400-member mark very soon, and we're really proud of that. We worked hard to have a lot of face-to-face relationships with our stakeholders, our We worked hard to have a lot of face-to-face relationships with our stakeholders, our small business owners in the community and will continue to do so. So that sums up about 70-plus events throughout the year. Um, the feedback from our membership has been very positive. Another area of success that I want to let you know about is board development. We've also brought in a facilitator to come and work all of our board conferences, both annually and our mid-year board planning conference. What that does is really creates a lot of strategic thought, um, for our membership and for the business community. And so it's been fun to be a part of that process as well. Of course, we're working on the City Guide publication. We have a new website. Thank you also for your help in supporting that. And special thanks to the city of Rancho Mirage for supporting our board efforts, um, the vision for change and for supporting me and cheering me on personally as well. We appreciate that. All of your financial support goes to, uh, the Chamber being a champion for a stronger community, fostering growth and change, uniting leaders and influencers and of course, being the choice for local businesses. So thank you so much. I do appreciate your time today.
Well, thank you so much, Katie. Uh, I don't know if many of you have been to some of these luncheons, but they are just priceless and an incredible way to meet other business people. And Katie has done an incredible job along with Rhonda. Uh, then that she's, the two of them are dynamos and they've made everything so much better and bigger and, and, um, the outreach has been palatable. And everybody comments about how you coming into, uh, the, um, position you have has, has done wonders for the Chamber and how thrilled we are to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you for the update.
Absolutely.
We'll do it again next year.
Katie, I know you've been working on other projects recently. You want to talk a little bit about the cookie drive you just finished?
Oh, well, that, that was just me personally, but, um, my nephew is in the Army and, um, he's not coming home for Christmas this year. And there's a, a large troop of them that are not able to really go, I think more than 50 miles, um, from Fort Bragg. And so we decided to do a cookie drive and it's funny about social media, when you have a lot of friends on social media and you ask for something, um, so we're now sending three huge boxes of, um, cookies, homemade cookies to Fort Bragg for the troops that won't make it home, just for a little taste of home for them. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Well, when you say, just a few cookies, how many did you, do you remember making?
You know, um, I didn't actually make that many. Becky Kite made quite a few cookies and, uh, just friends came out of the woodwork and brought them over to the Chamber and yeah, we're shipping them out.
Apparently hundreds and hundreds.
Uh, yes, yeah. They'll be very happy.
It was a big effort.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that.
Katie, you're doing a great job. We appreciate it. Uh, the enthusiasm with the Chamber, uh, is the very best that I've seen in the years that I've been associated with the council. So congratulations on just a wonderful, wonderful job.
Thank you. It's been a lot of fun. We can't wait for year two. Thank you. Thanks again.
Okay. So thank you for all those presentations and we will now move on to non-agenda public comments. And this is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda and we ask that you kind of limit your speaking to three minutes. And the first person that I have a yellow card for will be called up, but if you don't have a, a yellow card that you have filled out, please feel free to come up after all these speakers have spoken and we'd like to hear your voice too. So the first speakers will be Jack Srebnik and Bill Senso.
Good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate you giving us a few minutes. Um, I'm here representing Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce along with Thousand Palms Chamber of Commerce and we're very happy to be presenting a check to the Rancho Mirage High School Cafe Program. Each year, for the last four years, we have done a fundraiser there and this year, I have to say, was the most successful one we've ever had. It was a passport through the world. Uh, once again, Chef Merrick is always hiding in the back. Chef Merrick does an unbelievable job with these kids in this program and we should be very proud to have the program Rancho Rose High School. They all created foods from around the world. We also had a chef, a chef's challenge like they have on TV. We had some three or four local chefs come in and they were given a basket of tomquats and how to make something out of it. And they did unbelievable job. And so we're very honored and I want the chef to come up here. Don't be afraid. Come up here. These are nice people.
I know.
Uh, Chef Merrick has been at the school for many, many years and he is retiring. And, um, but he did promise he will be back next year to do this one event. And each year, it gets better and better and I just hope that next year, the council can be out there showing the support. The cafe program is a phenomenal program. My restaurants have hired, uh, multiple unpaid interns who became multiple jobs. We have three or four people out of Rancho Rose High School working at the Slice Maracas and JT's and it's a great avenue to give these kids a chance. And I have to tell you, most of them are much more qualified to be in the kitchen than I will ever be. And it's just amazing to see them. So we just wanted the city council to see what's going on in the school and with your backing through the Chamber and through, uh, Mr. Senso, who is the Executive Director of Thousand Palms. Uh, we've been doing this for four years and we want to show you the check we're presenting.
Okay. Well, how about if we turn around also to show the city council and our cameras up here? $2,500 Rancho Mirage FCC LA ASB, 2,500 and no cents. Thank you.
It's funny, two years ago, we did, three years ago, we did 1,500. And then last year, we did 1,500 and I, being a New Yorker, don't like to ever be even. So I took a dollar out of my pocket, we did 1,501. I'm happy to say I didn't have to take any money out of my pocket this year, so it's very, so it's very good. But I do, I appreciate it and I know that it's very important. These are, these are the stars right here. It's very important for the stars to see the people that are, that are there. Can you just give them your name? Do you mind? Just give me your name.
No, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Sophia Castleberry and I am FCC LA President this year.
And what year? What year?
Oh, I am a senior. We are all seniors.
Okay.
Uh, I'm Kira Smesser and I'm the Treasurer on the Board.
My pastry chef.
Thank you. Okay.
I am Serena Temez and I'm Secretary.
I'm Vic Lapuzza and I'm Event Coordinator.
Wonderful.
These are our future and if we knew, Isaiah, we would have brought you a birthday cake, but we didn't know. So happy birthday. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you all so much. Okay, so now we will move on to the next speaker and that will be Beverly Greer.
Madam Mayor and City Council Members, and happy birthday, Mr. City Manager. Uh, my name is Beverly Greer and I have the honor of representing the Neuro Vitality Center now in Palm Springs. Some of you may better know me as the Stroke Recovery Center and some of you even go back far enough to know me as the Stroke Activity Center. We have been around for over 40 years, serving your community, our community and the community of, uh, people in need that have had strokes and traumatic brain injuries. And, um, you're, we have been proud to be, uh, supported by the city of Rancho Mirage for many, many years and we, we do appreciate that. Uh, a number of years ago, we, we changed our name to the Neuro Vitality Center to, uh, include people that had other types of neurological disorders as, as, so we have, have started treating people with Parkinson's, with MS and with, with other problems that we felt would respond well to the types of therapies that we give. Well, the next step is, is ready to go. We are now in our, in what I call the evolution of care. When you're dealing with neurological problems and you consider yourself expert in that area, you can't ignore Alzheimer's and dementia. So we have, uh, gone to the state and we have, uh, managed to become licensed as an adult daycare provider, as well as what is called the Community-Based Adult Service Provider, which allows us to now be reimbursed for some of our services that we'll be able to give. And we will be, on January 1st, opening our doors to all of those patients that can respond and be helped by the types of services that we give. This is extremely exciting for us. It's a brand-new step. We've done a lot of renovations over the place. We will be inviting all of you to our open house and our dedication of our new building, uh, hopefully in January, once we, uh, once, once we get all, all the other events out of the way. But, uh, hopefully you'll all be able to come and have a look and see all the wonderful new things that we're doing over there. Thank you very much for your time and happy holidays to everybody.
And thank you, Beverly, and happy holidays to you too. You do remarkable work. We're so proud of everything you do and all the people that you're able to include and we look forward to attending, uh, your event, your open house, your ribbon cutting. So just keep us posted.
Definitely will. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, the next person to speak will be Wally Melendez.
Uh, good afternoon, um, City Council, Staff, Employees, Contractors and we, the people. Today, I'd like to talk about the ladder of real estate ownership. And there are four steps to the ladder of real estate ownership. The first one is renting an, um, an apartment. And the second one is purchasing a condo, which is an apartment that you purchase. The third step is to purchase a duplex, in which you should get a small piece of land, a small piece of yard in the front or the side or the, uh, back. And of course, the fourth step is to purchase a house with a nice-sized, uh, yard. Now, of course, in your purchases, you, uh, use the proceeds of when you move up that ladder to, um, to, as a down payment to the next purchase of the ladder. And so, uh, these are very important steps that, um, um, uh, citizens or people of all ages should, um, know. Most of the time when people go, uh, when people say, "Well, I'm going to buy me a house with a yard." A lot of times they say, "I'm going to buy me a house." They don't, a lot of people don't even know that a house comes with a yard and it's better to have a large yard with a house. So, um, I want to, uh, I've, I've spoken here, uh, many times about, um, the College of the Desert, how it should be, um, how it should offer a, um, bachelor's, uh, degree, uh, which, which I consider very important. In this valley, in this valley, uh, Coachella Valley, which at one, which at the beginning was called the Kahula Valley, uh, I find, uh, immigrants coming in here from the north with their, uh, bachelor's degrees and people from here don't have such a degree, which they never get a chance to advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're just going to take a, a little break for a few minutes here because we have something very special and this is the Rancho Mirage High School Band Performance. Uh, their leader is Brian McDaniel, Director of Bands and Instrumental Music, and they're going to come and bring us a little bit of festive holiday music and cheer. Okay, here they come.
Co-Rabblers.
Thank you, thank you. Would you like to come up and say a few words or do you have more to play?
Well, I, I do have a couple of words and I also hear it's somebody's birthday today.
Ta-da.
So, my name is Dr. Brian McDaniel. I am proud to be the new band director at Rancho Mirage High School. We've been playing all through the city and playing all through Southern California. This year, we're going to be competing at an international music festival for the first time in Hollywood, California, and we're real excited to be bringing these big honors to the city and to our high school. We thank you for being such a great leadership for our city and setting the tone and the example that allows my students to ascertain excellence. So thank you for what you do and we're hoping we're going to do everything to make you proud.
You already make us proud. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. It's your birthday, right, Mr. City Manager? Okay.
You're dancing. Huh?
Please face forward. One, two.
Happy birthday, Mr. City Manager, and we also have a, a video for you. Roll the video.
City Rancho Mirage, this is Shirley. How may I help you? Okay, let me transfer you.
Okay, let me transfer you. City Rancho Mirage, Debbie speaking. How can I direct your call? Oh, I can direct you to the right extension. Just one moment, please. Shirley, wrong extension again.
This is Johnny. How may I help you? No, I'm sorry, he's not available right now. I can take a message. And your name? Perfect. I'll make sure he gets that. Live from the city of Rancho Mirage.
Happy birthday, Isaiah.
Hi, Isaiah. On behalf of Admin Services, I just wanted to say a big happy birthday to you. I wish I could, I could be here, but you know it. So enjoy and enjoy. Happy birthday.
Isaiah, on behalf of the Housing Department, Higher Property Management, and the residents of the Housing Authority Properties.
Happy birthday.
Good afternoon. My name is Ty Davis, Division Chief with the City of Rancho Mirage Fire Department, Cal Fire Riverside County Fire. I'm here today with Battalion Chief Mike Beverlin and Battalion Chief Brian White. And we're here to thank Isaiah Hagerman, City Manager, for the City of Rancho Mirage, for all your support through all these years for the fire department. And we want to wish you a very, very, very happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Isaiah. Thank you for all the support. Happy birthday, Isaiah.
I make a motion to wish Isaiah Hagerman, City Manager of the City of Rancho Mirage, a happy birthday.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, 2-0.
Happy birthday, Isaiah.
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 Not literally.
Happy birthday, Isaiah.
Oh, the birthday you'll have. Congratulations. Today is your day. Now go have some fun. There's golf to be played.
But first, you must work. It's not quite time for spiked shoes. On your special day, your work, you should choose.
You've got a great team, and they know what is what. So take a nice stroll. The city won't go kaput.
You look up and down streets, look 'em over with care, keeping council happy, especially the mayor. With a team full of brains that can take desert heat, you don't have to worry about any not-so-good streets.
Some birthdays will warrant a break from City Hall. None of those hallways you'll wanna go down. In that case, of course, you'll head straight to Booktown.
There's space to the maps. You can explore in the stacks.
At the library, things can happen, and frequently do, to birthday boys tall and brainy as you.
Oh, the birthday you'll have.
You can enjoy all of your favorites. You'll be seeing great sights, like those beautiful minerals sparkling under the lights.
Now, if bad things start to happen, don't worry. Don't steal. Eric will fix it. Just relax with the book.
Have some fun in the dome. Zoom to light speed. Ponder the universe. Let Eric's brain take the lead. When it comes to astronomy, it's usually best to just enjoy an amazement along with the rest.
Time's only help, as you already know. You may get mixed up with some things as you go. Don't worry one bit. We'll find you that book. Our friendly librarians know right where to look.
A well-managed city is a great place to be. We've got a leader like you and our MTV.
There is one thing, one wish we all yearn for. It's not In-N-Out or Krispy Kreme. Not today. Our one simple wish for you, please enjoy your birthday. And on this special day, will you succeed? Just like Section 31, yes, you will. Yes, indeed. Ninety-eight and three-quarters percent guaranteed.
Thank you, guys, very much. All of this was a complete surprise. So sorry, council, I guess I don't have a very good handle on what goes on around here. We have such a great team, and I feel very lucky to be a part of it. So you guys made my birthday, obviously, very special. Thank you to my family, who also kept the secret. I lost control of home a long time ago. Now, apparently, I've lost it at City Hall, too. But thank you. Very special. Appreciate it.
After the, after the meeting, there'll be cake out in the lobby. And I want to thank Brian and the high school band. Thank you, guys, so much. You, guys, are doing fantastic work. And so we can't wait to partner more with you in the community. So thank you, guys, for being here today. Very much appreciate it.
Okay. And just, just in case any of you thought that we might be a little bit envious of Isaiah on this very special day, we wanted to show you that we have nothing to be envious about. This way, we can pretend to be Isaiah for the day. Thank you all for coming and congratulations again. Okay, so Isaiah can take a little break and take a few minutes outside there. And we will move on to the next speaker. And this is also part of public comments. So Brad Anderson, if you'd like to come up.
Thank you, Brad Anderson. 37043 Forward Drive in the City of Rancho Mirage. I want to take a moment of time to talk about the Vector Control District again. I've had, well, the performance of that district, luckily, the weather this year broke the mosquito cycle. And the 80s gipti mosquito, that's probably in everybody's backyard right now. It's gonna, so do that. But next spring, I fear that we're gonna be in a really, an issue in this valley and in the city especially. So I know, I think I spoke last time concerning the warrant that the city manager apparently signed in with the Vector Control District to use for abatement purposes. But I've only looked at one property in the city, and I'm afraid that it was misused on that one property, where fines were issued. And it was already abated by the Vector Control District. And, and issues of other violations on the property once inside the back fence yard. So, and that's only one property. And I fear that that's probably an issue. And like I've stated before, that warrant should be voided. The person that signed off on it's not employed by the district anymore. And the Athan Davison supported it. It would never be viewed by the city, as far as I know. So anyway, going on another topic, just kind of segueing on that. I, I know we're gonna have two issues with the city council, city council elections in April of next year. I really highly hope that a lot of people come out and apply for that. Because I know I can help, hopefully. Because the two outgoing trustee or trustees, but council members, they've had negative impacts on my property values and my, and in the city indirectly. But I know the city can do better. Just the happy staff that we've seen. I think, well, I'm kind of segwaying off of topics. But the city can do better. And, and for businesses to survive in the city or to prosper, it shouldn't have to impact or negatively impact people that live in the city. A lot of people come here to retire. They don't run businesses out of the homes or on Main Street. So anyway, again, you have my address. I put it on the fire. Please contact me. Everything's connected. A lot of, what do you call them? Nonprofits are involved in this whole thing. Follow the money. That's what I've done. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now we're gonna have a couple of words from our city attorney, Stephen Cantinao.
I just want to remind members of the public that the public comment period should address issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So to the extent that anyone has any issues with any independent special district or other public agency, such as the Coachella Valley Mosquito Abatement District, that is a separate governmental agency. The city has, the city council has no jurisdiction over employee issues. So if you're a former disgruntled employee that was employed with the district and you have issues with them, you should deal directly with them and not the city council.
Thank you, Stephen. Okay, we'll move on to the next person, who has filled out a yellow card. And that is Susan St. Louis.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Madam Mayor. I'm here to once again be a goad on an environmental issue. I am trying to engage the youth of the valley and get them motivated to lobby and think and act for the environment. And so I have sent you all a letter. And I appreciate that Councilmember Kite actually responded to that email. And I wanted to read the letter because I don't know if there are folks out there who are watching Rancho Mirage TV and seeing these, these meetings. And if so, I'm trying, I'm casting my net as wide as I can. So scientific evidence for climate change and growing climate disruption is overwhelming. It's no longer a question of whether it's happening, but what we're gonna do about it. Those of us in our 60s and older will probably escape the worst of the coming chaos and disruption by dying before it happens. Our young people are the ones facing a life of violent conflicts over land, food, and water as climate disruption gets worse and worse. They have the most to gain by getting involved and trying to mitigate the problems. I'm hoping to stimulate discussion of these facts and to encourage high school and college students to get engaged in climate activism. I see several avenues of potential involvement for them. One is speaking out on campus, in their local communities, in the local press, radio, and TV, and anywhere that they feel that they can be heard. Another is creating environmental activism groups on their own campuses to raise awareness of the issue and to push school policies to become more green, such as increasing recycling, the use of renewable energy, emphasizing plant-based food options, et cetera. Joining with other lobbying groups, the Sierra Club, Sustain Us, Uplift, Sunrise, Extinction Rebellion, and many more, to develop a network of supporters and ideas that can be acted upon. And writing, texting, calling, tweeting, and using all avenues of communication to urge members of Congress or state legislators to adopt important laws and resolutions. I would be grateful if you could speak with anyone you know, teachers, students, administrators, business leaders, anyone you can think of who might have an interest in this issue, to discuss it and get back to me. If you find interested parties, or you could pass on my contact information to them. Once again, my name is Susan St. Louis. I live at 16 Clancy Lane South in Rancho Mirage. My number is 760-831-1366. And I hope that I will get some action on this because we don't have any time to waste. Thank you.
Before you, excuse me, before you leave, I know that I did not get any email from you. I'm not sure where you sent mine. Email's coming to me through the city for some reason.
I'll resend it.
Disappear. Send it to my home.
Yes.
And, which I think you have.
I have your email address, yes. I'll resend it.
Only number to use for me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, and the last person on this list is Joseph Hofflet. You know, perhaps we can bring a microphone? Okay. Okay, you know what? If you go over to the other podium, I think that'll be easier for you. And then you can face us directly.
Pass these around, please. Give me my copy. Good afternoon. My issue is with the, I'm sure you're involved with the Colony Mobile Home Community, if I recall. I've been told so. It's in regard to not being in compliance with the ADA. The bathroom stalls are not large enough for a wheelchair to enter. Obviously, that means me, and it's not a big chair. The electric sliding lift chair in one of the areas does not function properly, if it does. And also, there is no access for a disabled person to go to or from the main meeting room. There should be a chairlift, a ramp, or some means to get from the entry, the lobby, into the huge meeting room. And number four, there is no excuse, pardon me, no access for a disabled person to go to or from the pool area or to the main lobby area from the pool area. It's all steps up or down. There's no way that I could get from one area to the other at all. That's it. Just to filing a complaint. Okay. Thank you.
Are you one of the 34 pending petitioners?
What?
Have you filed a petition with the city in regards to the issues you raised? Because we just went through a series of hearings. And I believe we have one of the petitioners, a couple of petitioners here whom
We do?
Comment about it.
Okay.
But we just went through a number of hearings dealing with some of these issues. Not particularly the ones you raised, but a lot of other issues.
All right. Whoever it is, if they wish, they can get in touch with you. It'd be great.
Carol, you're out there somewhere.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so now this is the time for public speakers to come forward if they have something they wish to speak about that is not on our agenda. And I see somebody walking up here. Please state your name and your place of residence.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Thesley. I live at 100 Acapulco Street in the colony here in Rancho Mirage. I am the president of CHOA, our homeowners organization here. And I just wanted to come up and thank our city, the city council, the Mobile Home Fair Practice Commission, and the city attorney for everything they've been doing to help us get along with the issues we are having at the colony. Without the support of this city, we wouldn't be where we're at with the things we're trying to get done to help this gentleman and everyone else in our community. And I just wanted to come up to thank you all. I am so happy I moved to this community. Best place I can think I've ever lived throughout California. And this is where we plan to stay until we're not on the ground anymore, but in another place. But it's really great. And again, thank all of you and everybody that has been assisting us. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, I see someone coming down the aisle. Come on down.
Thank you so much to, to you, Madam Mayor, and to the council. In 19, I'm sorry, in 2016, we began
In 2016, we began writing letters of failure to maintain at the Colony Mobile Home Park in Rancho Mirage. And you were so receptive. And you referred us to the Housing Department and to your city attorney, whom we so appreciate. And yesterday, there was a culmination of all of that. We filed 21 petitions that were accepted and processed. The city entertained four of those petitions, one of which was mine and my husband's, Daryl. And you ruled favorably in the commission yesterday, ruled favorably, I would say, on 70% of what we were asking for, and we so appreciate it. And we are so appreciative of the city of Rancho Mirage and the citizens in this city who were bold enough to vote for a rent control ordinance that is working. We're just so grateful. We know we have many more steps to go, but yesterday was a huge step and very gratifying, even though Hometown America tried to silence me by sending me a cease and desist letter to me and my husband indicating that if I didn't quit stalking the manager, which, you know, I'm really good at, that if I didn't cease and desist doing that, that they would repossess my home, which is a very, very scary feeling and retaliatory and against the ordinance again. So, we'll still work through that. So far, we're still in our house. And I just wanted to thank everybody sincerely. Thank you.
We shake your hand, but we're afraid.
Carol, you're going to remain in your house.
Pardon me?
You're going to remain in your house.
Well, you know, it's so funny. A bunch of the people came to the meeting yesterday and said that they would lay down on the street if they tried to take us out.
All right. Just come back to the microphone one moment and just state your name. Because and where you live.
Carol Malve Hill. I live at 196 International, Rancho Mirage.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and now, our city attorney wanted to make one comment.
I just want to respond to the comments made by representatives of the colony. This was a long, drawn-out process. It began a while ago. And I just want to make it clear for the record, and the residents understand this. I was not in a position to represent their interests. And so, throughout this entire process, I had to remain neutral and apply the facts to the law as presented. Now, for the record, the rent control ordinance was actually approved back in the 80s by the voters. And so, as I mentioned the other day, you know, we have to deal with rent control because it's here. The city council doesn't have the authority to change it in any manner, with some minor exceptions. But some of the suggestions that were made at the dais during the Rent Control Commission meetings, I had to remind everybody that, yes, that sounds great if we can change or adopt certain procedures, but we can't. We're left dealing with what the voters delivered to us. So, again, there's, I just want to make it clear that I don't represent the homeowners in this case, and they clearly understand that. And with respect to the letter that Carol received from the manager, I am going to send a letter, and I explained this to the park's attorney, indicating that that appears to be retaliatory, which is in violation of our rent control ordinance. So, a letter will go out, and you'll get a copy of that.
Well, thank you to you all, and thank you, Steve. Okay, so, is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda? No one is standing. No one is waving. So, we will close that portion of our agenda and move on to city council board member comments and reports. And we will start with Charlie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last week, I had the pleasure to attend, along with my fellow city council members, when Christmas came to Rancho Mirage by popular demand to start off the season with the big band Christmas show at our amphitheater. With over 800 folks enjoying this free concert, Santa arrived and greeted everyone with his Christmas wishes for all. Lamone Carr Productions, in partnership with the city of Rancho Mirage, put on a fabulous show this year with a nine-piece orchestra singing and dancing with the melody of the sounds of Christmas. Santa Claus was there to wish all a happy holiday season. This free concert with complimentary hot cocoa, coffee, and cookies were there for all to enjoy. This was the beginning of the second season of musical shows at our amphitheater. And for more information on the events coming, please go to www.desert-theatricals.com and get all the information on these outstanding musical events coming to our beautiful amphitheater this season. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And Dana, did you have something?
Just briefly, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. I don't think we, we don't have a meeting between now and New Year, do we?
No.
I think so. Happy New Year. I hope that the coming year proves to bring most of us, all of us, what we deserve and what we want, and good health in particular. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Dana. Okay, moving on to this side. Ted, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Iris. David Green, the producer and creator of Musical Theater University, has created a wonderful musical experience at Aqua California Bistro at the River. This program is partially sponsored by the city of Rancho Mirage. It's a showcase for new talent in the desert. As you will see momentarily, the kids are talented and fun to watch. I was unaware that Jerry Keller, the owner of Aqua Plaza and Lulu California Bistro in Palm Springs, had personal experience in musical theater as a performer. Jerry, you held that back from us. The concept is a musical revue where students and alumni sing and dance their way through the evening. It's an opportunity for young performers to get experience while waiting for their big break. Gabe Cottin mentioned to me, when I said that I wanted to make some comments about this, that we're really creating here in Rancho Mirage a thread, starting with the kids with no experience, with a program originated by Lamone Carr, a wonderful theatrical group that Charlie was just talking about, who had a show called Seussical. Young children that had never had any theatrical experience going on through the Performing Arts at the high school and then on to something like the program at Aqua Plaza, where we now have kids that have gone through, basically, this program and are now, literally, as we speak, now on Broadway. Just very, very exciting. And to think that it's homegrown right here in Rancho Mirage. The concept is a musical revue where students and alumni sing and dance their way through the evening. It's an opportunity for young performers to get experience. Now, take a look and have some fun. And if you would, show the video, if you would.
That I can do. I can do that.
Now, that's fun. Dinner is served at a modest price while the 11-member cast engages you with musical numbers, big and small. The big ones are backed by quality orchestra tracks and the softer moments by musical director and local entertainer Jackie Davis. Green says the show is ever-evolving, and each week, the production will be different. I can tell you that my wife and I stopped in by happenstance. Stayed, watched the show. We were enthralled, and we're going to go back again. It's just a fun, fun evening. One other thing, again, a contribution of what's going on in our valley. And the city of Rancho Mirage presents At the McCallum Theater, Palm Springs Legends Number Five. One of the things we do is we sponsor three shows a year at the McCallum. The city has invested close to $1 million over the years, again encouraging new talent. The arrangement that we have is that any unsold tickets for these shows, and frankly, others at the McCallum, are donated and offered to our affordable housing tenants. So, it's a program that has worked out well and has given, frankly, people the opportunity to see live theater that they might not otherwise have the opportunity to do. This particular program features tribute artists honoring Jack Benny, George Burns, Carol Channing, Bobby Darin, Bob Hope, Mary Martin, Elvis Presley, Andy Williams, and Nat King Cole. Backed by popular demand and relive the heyday of Palm Springs with loving tributes to its greatest stars, performed by the best tribute artists in the world, backed by a swinging 13-piece big band. This wonderful event that I've just described will be on Wednesday, January 15, 2020, at 8:00 p.m. As you can see, 8 o'clock, January 15, at the McCallum Theater. To purchase tickets, as you can see, www.mccallumtheater.com. Again, years ago, when I first got to the valley, the expression was, well, gee, if you don't play tennis or you don't play golf, there's really nothing to do here. You can be busy, literally, every single day. You can go to our library, which is round-the-clock, virtually, entertainment of some kind. You have the McCallum. You have now what I've described as Aqua Plaza, and of course, the Theater Performing Arts at the high school. Wonderful place, lots of things to do. And again, like Dana said, I want to wish everybody a happy, happy New Year, a healthy New Year. My best to all of my fellow veterans who have served. I wish them a happy New Year and Godspeed. Thank you very much. Thank you, Iris.
Now, it's Richard's turn.
Iris, thank you very much. And as you all can tell, there's a lot going on in the city of Rancho Mirage. And I know you're a big sports fan, so we've got something just for you.
Great. I can't wait.
Okay, well, what we're going to be introducing today is the 2020 Speaker Series. And this is a program put on by the city every year, and it gets better and better. And this year, the Speaker Series is Legends of Sports. This is the first time we've really focused in on one particular entertainment area. So, it should be a lot of fun. A lot of people are going to be wanting to go and hear these legends. The first one is on Tuesday, January 21. Danica Patrick will be there onstage. And those of you who are retired or race buffs know that Danica recently retired as a car driver. She's also an author, an entrepreneur, and a podcast host. As a race car driver, Danica broke barriers and set records with her on-track performance. With her racing career behind her now, Danica looks to the next chapter as she focuses on her passions, which are good food, good wine, fitness, and helping others achieve their goals. I guess some of those things we like too. Good food, good wine, and so forth. The next speaker will be Joe Montana, and he'll be joining us on Tuesday, February 18. All of you who are Ram fans, say boo to Joe Montana, but he was one of the greatest quarterbacks in the history of the NFL. He's also a member of the Pro Football Hall of Fame. Joe was selected late in the third round of 1979 draft by the San Francisco 49ers coach, Bill Walsh, and went on to head the 49ers to victories in four Super Bowls, including consecutive wins in 1989 and 1990. He joined the Kansas City Chiefs in 1993 before retiring. And as I mentioned, he was inducted into the Pro Football Hall of Fame in the year 2000. And finally, the third speaker of this series will be tennis legend and holder of 21 Grand Slam titles, Chris Evert, who will speak on Tuesday, March 17. Chris began playing tennis at a very young age and was taught to play by her father. By the time she was 19 years old, Chris had won Wimbledon. And in 1976, Chris became the first tennis player to reach the $1 million mark in career prize money. In 1995, Chris was the fourth player ever to be elected unanimously to the International Tennis Hall of Fame, and she was the sole inductee that year. What a great group of speakers. I know you'll enjoy them all. If you'd like to buy tickets, series tickets and individual tickets, you can call 1-800-595-4849, or you can visit the Rancho Mirage Library and purchase tickets there. Tickets are still available for all three speakers, but I can tell you they're going fast. So, if you want to go, I suggest you do it right away and visit the library or call in the number. Individual tickets are $45 for general seating and $60 for preferred seating. And of course, again, it's while available. The Speaker Series is once again being held at the Helene Galen Auditorium at the Annenberg Health Science Building at Eisenhower Health. The venue is located at 39000 Bob Hope Drive in Rancho Mirage. So, once again, got three great speakers. Call that number, 800-595-94949. That again is 800-545-4849. You'll enjoy yourself. You'll see three great sports legends. And everybody will, I'm sure, enjoy being at the Annenberg. It's a great venue. So, that's it, Mayor. I'll see you there.
You will absolutely see me there. All right, thank you so much, Richard.
Richard, let me ask you a question. That with Danica, who is extremely popular, most of the people in the sports world know that Danica is dating Aaron Rodgers, the star quarterback of the Green Bay Packers. And the question is, which I found quite humorous, is when they go out on a date, who drives? I happen to think it's probably Aaron still. But anyway, it's an interesting question. Thank you.
Well, everyone had a comment on that one. So, thank you, Richard. All right, it's always good to be updated on all these things happening in our city. And so, now, we will move on to the city manager comments, and Isaiah Hagerman will do this.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff is
Staff is requesting that the council approve a motion to table Agenda Item Number 17. That is the ordinance for the library use policies. That would take a motion and approval by the council in order to do that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. So, all right, so now, Isaiah, would you like to go ahead with the approval of the minutes? And I will ask for a motion and a second on that.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote on that one.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and now we're getting on to the consent calendar.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have 13 items on the consent calendar for your consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt Ordinance Number 1166, second reading, adopting development agreement case number DA 19003 related to the Section 31 specific plan. Item number three is to adopt Ordinance Number 1167, second reading, adopting specific plan case number SP 18001, Section 31. Item number four is to adopt Ordinance Number 1168, second reading, adopting general plan zoning map amendment case number GPZMA 18003 related to Section 31 specific plan. Item number five is to adopt Ordinance Number 2019-SA-NEXT IN ORDER approving the ROPS payment schedule for the fiscal year 2020-2021. Item number six is to adopt Resolution Number 2019, NEXT IN ORDER, approving the city's salary schedules in compliance with Cal-PUR statutory requirements. Item number seven is to approve the annual closure of the library and observatory for the Rancho Mirage Riders Festival. Although the physical building is closed, all online resources are still available, along with phone inquiries, and email help functions are still available as well. Just the physical building will be closed for the Rancho Mirage Riders Festival. Item number eight is to approve the revised October 3, 2019, city council meeting minutes. Item number nine is to approve the final acceptance of the Dyna Shore Drive pavement rehabilitation from Plumlee Road to Deval Drive, City Project CP 19-346. Item number 10 is to approve an addendum to the Third Amendment and restatement of the Joint Powers Agreement of SEVAG, admitting the Torres Martinez Tribe as a member of SEVAG. Item number 11 is the approval of two special assistance funds awards to two qualified nonprofits. Item number 12 is the approval of contracts. Item number 13, our demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much, Isaiah. And Steve is going to fill us in on something else.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment about the fact that the mayor's not going to participate in voting on Items 2, 3, and 4 out of the abundance of caution because her primary residence is located within 500 feet of the potential project site. But I just want to make it clear, there's no proof she has an actual conflict of interest. She's just recusing herself because of a potential conflict of interest. But the Brown Act doesn't require her to leave the dais or leave the room. And in fact, if you have any comments about any of these items, because it's your primary residence, you can comment about it from out there, if you want.
Thank you so much, Steve. Okay, so we'll do this in two separate votes. First, we will have the council, excluding me, approve or vote on Item Number 2, 3, and 4. So please cast your vote.
Want to ask if there's any comments from the audience?
Okay, okay. Are there any comments from the members of the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and move on to our vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Smot Rich recused.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the other items. Items 1, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. And I will make the motion, and may I have a second?
You got it, second.
Okay.
Dana, vote. Dana, vote.
Mayor Protam Hobart waiting for your vote.
Dana.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you, Christie. And now we'll move on to the public hearings and Item Number 14. And this is an item that's going to be handled by Ben Torres. He's our associate planner, and it's the historic preservation. And it's a consideration to designate the residence located at 1204 Tamarisk West Street as a historic resource. Thank you so much, Ben.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you, like you mentioned, is a request from Amy and Gerald Hope requesting historic resource designation for the residence located at 1204 Tamarisk West Street. Let me see here, sorry about that. The two-bedroom residence is located within the Tamarisk West Phase II development, as shown here and read on the map. The home was built in 1969 and was designed by mid-century modern architect Michael Black, who worked locally within the Coachella Valley. Tamarisk West Phase II is also included in the city's historic resources survey. The homeowners association acquired copies of original plans from 1968 for the development. And, sorry about this here. The subject residence is shown here and read on the site plan here as number four. It was considered as a Unit B. On the building elevations here, the subject residence shares a common wall with the other unit here. And on the patio side elevation and on the pool side elevation, the residence is shown in red. And on the bottom elevation there, the entrance elevation, that's the full Unit B elevation. Let me see here, sorry about that. This is a view from the west side, street view elevation, and as you can see, the home has a flat roof design. The home's main entrance is located along the side of the home. This elevation provides deep roof overhangs and further showcases the flat roof design of the home. Floor-to-ceiling glass is provided along the west elevation, which faces the community's common recreational area and provides a memorable indoor-outdoor living experience. The Historic Preservation Commission toured this residence on October 23, 2019. Originally, the HOA requested a historic district designation for the entire Tamarisk West Phase II development, and historic designation requests were submitted by nine out of the 12 homes within this development. This home was one of two within Tamarisk West Phase II to receive a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. The homeowners have done an excellent job in preserving key aspects of the home to showcase its iconic mid-century modern design. And at this time, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number NEXT IN ORDER, designating the residential home located at 1204 Tamarisk West Street, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-210030 as a historic resource. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Are there any questions from council?
Yes, I have a comment. Touring the home with Ben and with the commission, and Amy, you're out there, I see you. Beautiful, beautiful complex, and they have such pride and joy in this as being such a part of this historical part of Rancho Mirage. And I commend them for the love and the devotion that they have to their buildings and that complex.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyone from this side?
Just one question. The plans which we saw here, are those the original plans?
Yes, those are the original plans. They're from 1968. So it's a kind of unique story on how the HOA obtained these plans. They actually obtained them from the original mortgage company. So it's kind of astonishing how, you know, banks would keep plans for this long. And, you know, now we have them here for our benefit to showcase this iconic, you know, neighborhood here in this home.
That's great. So infrequent that we get the original plans and to have these, what an archive that we can put aside for the future.
Yeah, and also, the homeowners hired a historic preservation consultant to prepare a historic report that was included in your agenda packet. So they did an excellent job in compiling information for these homes as well, too.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, any comments from the public or questions they would like to ask? All right, we'll close the public comments and call for a vote.
I will vote that the city council adopt Resolution Number NEXT IN ORDER, designating the residential home located at 1204 Tamarisk West Street, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-210030, a historic resource.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And congratulations, Amy.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. And the next item is Item Number 15, and that was also going to be handled by Ben Torres, our associate planner. And this is also regarding a historic preservation case, consideration to designate the residence located at 1208 Tamarisk West as a historic resource.
Good afternoon again, Madam Mayor. And this is also a home within that same development that we previously saw in this last presentation. So the item before you is a request for Mary Leung requesting historic resource designation for her residence located at 1208 Tamarisk West Street. The two-bedroom residence is located within the Tamarisk West Phase II development, as shown here on the map. This home was also built in 1969 and was also designed by architect Michael Black. He designed the entire Tamarisk West Phase II development, and this is also included in the city's historic resources survey. As previously mentioned, the homeowners association acquired copies of the original plans for this development, and the subject property here is shown in red. On the building elevations, the subject residence is shown as Unit A2R. Since this residence shares a common wall on the patio side and pool side elevations, the applicable building portions are shown here in red for those areas there. This is a view from the south street side elevation. As you can see, the home has a flat roof design, and the lushly landscaped front yard area further enhances the home's curb appeal. The home's main entrance is also located here on the side of the home, and this elevation provides deep roof overhangs and also provides a stone wall accent feature that further complements the home's architecture. Floor-to-ceiling glass is provided along the north elevation, which faces the community's common recreational area and provides a memorable indoor-outdoor living experience. In addition to the deep roof overhangs and stone wall accent feature here, they provide additional interest to the rear yard elevation of the home. The Historic Preservation Commission toured this residence back in October 23, 2019, along with eight other homes that requested historic resource designation within the development. As I previously mentioned, this home was one of the two within Tamarisk West Phase II that received a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. And the homeowners have done an excellent job in preserving key aspects of this home to showcase its iconic mid-century modern design. And at this time, staff is recommending that the city council adopt Resolution Number NEXT IN ORDER, designating the residential home located at 1208 Tamarisk West Street, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-210034 as a historic resource. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the homeowner are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ben. And are there any questions from or comments?
Well, let me say again, as I said, this is a very unique, unique project that has been really preserved, but with love for all of these people, including Mary out there again, and say hi to all of you there who have done a wonderful job. It's great.
Okay, any comments on this side? Richard?
You mentioned that there were two units that you looked at and were qualified for historic preservation. How many units were there total in the development?
So in total, within the second Tamarisk West Phase II, there's six buildings, and each building contains two units of various sizes. I believe one of the units is a small size of about 1,900 square feet, and then there's larger units of about 3,000 square feet. So in total, there are 12 units within that development, and we just saw the two units, 1204 and 1208 Tamarisk West Street, that the Historic Preservation made recommendations on.
So how many total now are dedicated to the historic preservation?
So the council just designated 1204 as a historic resource. So we currently have one unit within that development as a historic resource, and this other unit is up for consideration right now.
Let's see, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
One other thing I want to say is, these homes, a lot of them have the original furniture in there, which is amazing, right, Mayor? Really amazing how they have done and what they've done with this. It's like walking into a movie set from the 19, what, 60s? Very, very beautiful, and they're just so passionate about this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, are there any comments or questions from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and move on to a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion that the city council adopt Resolution Number 2019, NEXT IN ORDER, designating the residential home located at 1208 Tamarisk West Street, Rancho Mirage, California, Assessor Parcel Number 674-210034, a historic resource.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, and Dana would like to say a word?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Wait, can we go back one second? It looks like it's 4-1 with Councilmember Kite voting no. Is that correct?
No, I'm sorry, I misspoke on my button.
Okay, you misspoke your button, okay.
I'm in favor.
Let's do this one more time. Please vote.
Please vote again.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, now Dana.
Not many people know this, but the oldest house in the city is the house over by our playground. It's at the west end of our playground. That house, at one time, was located up in, just off of Bob Hope and just north of...
Clancy Lane.
Clancy Lane. And it occurs to me that we can make up, if we'd like to, we can make up for a mistake that we made about 17 years ago, something like that. We made a motion, I made a motion, to transfer the house from its location, where it had been all those years, over to the land that the city owned by the park. And that motion passed. But what didn't pass in that effort was, we also, Ron Mipos and I, had moved to have the house operable so we could have a staff person sit in there maybe on weekends and holidays and give out material, things of that nature. So it doesn't have inside electricity, water, toilet, that sort of thing. And what I'd like to have happen is that we correct that mistake of years ago, or that we'll call it a mistake, the situation of years ago, that we have some member of staff or members of staff go through that house and see if you can't come up with an estimate of what it would cost to make the house habitable. That way, people who are visiting the park or who are visiting the house would be able to walk into it and see what's inside and see what was there. to walk into it and see what's inside and see what was there. And by the way, that house is there, and it was brought there brick by brick, stone by stone, from the location off of Bob Hope. And it's in exactly the shape that it was when it was first built. Maybe we can also find some documents that would clue us in as to when it was first built. But regardless of all that, that is the oldest house in our city. And it seems to me we could make more of a site for residents and visitors to see and visit by spending a little bit of money and making it habitable, so that it can accommodate people. And I would ask the city manager maybe just to do that informally, to get some idea of what it would cost, and then we'll go from there.
Definitely. Staff will do the appropriate research, take it to a subcommittee, and bring it back to the city council for action at a future date.
Thank you.
Dana, an interesting fact, this last week, I was at the amphitheater, and a gentleman came up to me and introduced himself as the individual who lived in that house.
That right?
Before it was, of course, obviously before it was moved, but going way back, he said he lived there for a number of years.
Who was the developer that was required to move the house, that we required?
That was...
I believe it was John Westman. Staff is currently conducting research on this house for the Historic Preservation Commission, that we're going to present at our next meeting on January 8th, Wednesday, January 8th, regarding a request from Mr. Stephen Philansby, who I believe his grandfather, he has a claim that he owned the home. So we're trying to do research on correcting the history for this home. So if any council members want to attend this meeting, we're going to be discussing that home at that meeting.
Well, I think it's extremely important, you make it clear, that the city owns that house now. And the city required the developer, the Westman, we made Westman pay half of the moving costs. He didn't like it. He was unhappy about it. But his travails fell on deaf ears. The problem was, we lost on a three to two vote to do it all then and there. But now that we're getting more back into the older houses and historic importance and that sort of thing, I don't think we can let it go any longer. But keep in mind, that is owned by the city, not some prior owner. So if you have any confusion or issue on that subject, believe me, our minutes of the transfer of the house to its current location can easily be dug up.
Yeah, well, Dana, this was done a couple of years ago. This has come to the commission, the toll commission. The person that brought it forward has all of the information and everything on the house through his family. He has no claim on it. He just wants to see it preserved, and that the right history is on the records, because there is some discrepancy on the house of who and what owned it through the years and how we got it. So this is what they're doing. But Ben is aware of it. The commission is aware of it. And I urge you all, the next time that they do this, to be there and listen to what they're trying to say.
Whatever it is they're trying to say is consistent with us moving forward and trying to make it semi-habitable.
Yeah, or museum quality, for what it was in the original.
It's just that we have to do something with that house, rather than just leave it sitting there.
Right.
And nobody goes in it, because it looks like it's closed and...
Abandoned.
It's not a...
It's a very good idea.
It's not appealing. But it can be made appealing for not too much money. And shame on us if we don't take an antique, so to speak, like this house, and do something to highlight it.
I agree. I agree.
We're on it.
He's on it.
Wow.
You got it.
Next big project.
Actually, the house issues during periods of time like the art fair. Our commissions are in there and show people around. But certainly, if it were made functional, we could go there and have sleepovers.
Or if your wife gets angry at you, you got a place to...
But you know, really, to put it back to what it really was, it's not that big, and it wouldn't really cost that much. And I think it's a nice idea to see what it was originally with furnishings and artifacts in the house. I agree with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all for your comments and information. And Dana, I think you'll get a kick out of it, because on the way to the holiday show, Tommy and I had the pleasure of bringing with us Dr. Richard Roger and his wife, someone you know from the past, who also graduated from USC, and a well-renowned cardiologist who practiced for many, many years at Eisenhower, and moved into the Rancho Mirage area many, many years ago, built a home. And he was the one, when we walked out of our cars and into the parking lot, and he said, "There's the home I used to live in." And he lived in there for two years. So he has quite a history there. And maybe he can even help out with giving ideas about if you decide to furnish it, or what it should be, and what it had been.
It seems to me that one of the charges that should be given to the committee, commission, Historic Preservation Commission, is to get all of the information possible about the history of the house.
Yeah.
And then at some point in time, between them and the council and others who are interested and knowledgeable, put this back together again and give it its rightful glory and place in the sun.
Okay, that sounds good. And I'll be glad to contact Richard and see if he can lend some assistance.
They leased the house, but what we have is the original people and the family that go back to when it was really like a date grove and all that.
Right.
I've seen it. I've been there with it. And they're very happy to supply this and see even what it was like inside and outside. So we have all that. So it's good. It's a good idea.
Okay. All right. So, as you can see, we take very seriously our mid-century modern architecture in Rancho Mirage. We have so many homes that have been designated. And we are very, very careful, because there are very specific requirements. And we have been very lucky that we have been able to preserve so many of these homes. And if you do have a home and you live in Rancho Mirage, and you think it could be designated as a historic monument, then please contact the city, 324-4511. That is 760-324-4511. We'll be more than happy to give you the information of who you might want to contact with our Historic Preservation Commission. So I think that finishes that. And now that we have tabled item, we have tabled item 17, but we are going back to item 16, because we didn't finish with that one. So we'll go here, and this is also, again, for Ben Torres. And this is another historic preservation case, to consider and designate the residence located at 37-130 Palm View Road as a historic resource.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. This is the last home for today. The item before you is a request from Dennis O'Connor and Kyle Thorpe requesting historic resource designation for their residence located at 37130 Palm View Road. The four-bedroom residence is situated overlooking the third fairway of the Tamarisk Country Club Golf Course, as shown here on the map. The home was built in 1957 for Gomo Marx, an original member of the famous Marx Brothers. It was designed by mid-century architect Val Paulson, who is known for his breathtaking architectural designs. This residence was also included in the city's Historic Resources Survey. These undated photographs of the home show its original design before any alterations or additions were done to the home. These photographs were obtained from Robert Marx, who was the original builder of the home, and also from a Palm Springs Life publication. This is a view from the west side of the home, overlooking Palm View Road. As you can see, the home has a flat roof design, except along the center, where the roof pitches and exposes a long singular wooden beam, which provides a unique design element to the home. Long, narrow stretches of floor-to-ceiling windows further enhance the home's architecture along the front edge. Along the rear elevation, the home's pitched roof and wall of windows is the most noteworthy element. Like the front elevation, an exposed beam projects out from the roof and onto the sky to make a bold architectural statement. These are pictures from the north and south elevations, which provide some floor-to-ceiling windows, and have a flat roof design as well here, too. The Historic Preservation Commission first toured this residence over a year ago, and instructed the applicant to take care of some deferred maintenance issues. Recently, on November 13th, 2019, the commission re-toured the property after the homeowner completed a home remodel and restoration. The Historic Preservation Commission agreed that the home met the requirements for designation based on multiple criteria. The homeowners have done an excellent job in restoring this iconic home to showcase its unique mid-century modern design. And at this time, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution number next in order, designating the residential home located at 37130 Palm View Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Accessor Parcel Number 674-260-012 as a historic resource. That concludes staff's presentation, and staff and the homeowner are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, again. And are there any questions or comments?
Well, you know I do.
Okay.
Let me just say that Rancho Mirage has a vast value of wonderful historic homes that would match, I think, what's going on in Palm Springs. Not only for the architectural, but for the celebrity value and the history, including Thunderbird, that developed the Thunderbird car, came from that. So our history is huge. And I want to say that this commission has really stepped up. And I got to say that Ben has done a wonderful job in encouraging, and the people that we have on the commission now are very dedicated to pulling all this out, which we, I don't know whether we didn't care, I won't be that cruel, say we didn't care, but we certainly care now. And I'm very proud of this. And also, we will be sponsors of the Modernism Week, and we will have tours. And also, to show you the vastness of what we have in modernism or celebrity homes, Melissa Ritchie, who is a writer and a person who is very adamant on being there to promote the city of Rancho Mirage, put together a beautiful book that was introduced last year at our library. She's been there twice. And she's done a wonderful job with that. And I encourage, as Iris, what you were saying, anybody who thinks they have something that they want to preserve, you have the phone number of City Hall, you have the commission to come to who will listen to you. And I, for one, am very proud to have been a part of this since the beginning, when I came on council. And what I'm really saying is, the step forward of what we have done to come up and step up to that plate, I'm very proud of it, proud of staff that has been there, and our residents who have come forward, like Mary and your group over there. It gives me a great warm feeling, and I'm very thrilled and excited for Rancho Mirage Historical Preservation. Thank you. Big speech.
Okay. It was a good one, though.
Good.
All right. So now we'll open the public comments. If there's anyone out there that would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, oh, here comes someone.
Thank you very much, Brad Anderson, Ferber Drive, Rancho Mirage. I just want to, first thing, I want to apologize if the board feels that my comments are disgruntled in any way, because I can honestly say they're not. But walking by that home for the last 20-plus years, walking my dogs, and it used to have mature trees, and I think they had to remove one of them, and the other one looks like it's going to go that way. But it was always an eye catcher, and I'm glad that the city's going to preserve that. It's lighter colors, it's definitely a different house now, looking at it, than it was originally with, I think it had turf. But the people who would make the neighborhood, and I remember they had two dogs there, and they were always happy to see me when I go by with my dogs. But anyway, just a fun fact, it's not a fun fact, but West Nile was detected within feet of that property earlier this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments and move on to a vote. Charlie, would you like to make a motion?
Well, I appreciate that honor, and I will. The city council adopt resolution number 2019, next in order, designating the residential home located at 37-130 Palm View Road, Rancho Mirage, California, Accessor Parcel Number 674-260-012, a historical resource.
Thank you, and I will second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, please vote.
I think Charlie...
Motion carries. Charlie made the motion, and I seconded it.
We seconded.
You seconded, too. Okay, we'll include everybody.
It's okay with me. Two seconds is good.
We got three of them.
Three, oh, God.
And the votes have been entered.
Madam Clerk, was the second Jeremy Glenn?
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Christie. Okay, so we have tabled item number 17, and so we're going to go on to closed session. But first, I believe we have someone who would request to speak before we go on to Steve Q and his comments. I have a card here for you, Brad Anderson.
I saw, I know you were looking my way, and I thought, well, it can't be anybody else, it's got to be me. But I just want to, I know it's funny, because it's sad, but it's a fact, I guess. But I wanted to address the city attorney on this closed session items for the past few meetings, because apparently Rancho Mirage has, according to his testimony or his comments, a disgruntled employee. And having that word used against me tonight was interesting. But I know disgrunted when I hear, that's funny, I had this. This is what I was going to talk about. But I think the city should take the higher road and use another term, because that term is negative in nature. And of course, I don't know any information concerning any of this, but that's negative to the employer or the past employer, even if there's something wrong, and I can think of Sandra Johnson right off the bat. But thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll move on to closed session comments from our city attorney, Steve Cantoneo.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like to just make a couple comments that are kind of a little off the record. But I've had the experience of working with the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control District, thanks to this guy here, who was one of the trustees appointed by the city years ago. And after this guy got on that board, straightened everything out, and left it in well-managed order, I was personally witness to how well-run that organization is, how well-structured it is, and how much protections it provides and due process it provides to its employees. They have a labor union down there. I was in the, you know, I participated in negotiating that MOU. I had a lot of respect for the employees there, a lot of respect for the supervisors, and a lot of respect for the entire board with respect to how they respected their employees and the employees' rights. So anytime we hear anything that sounds derogatory about the mosquito and vector control district, I just want you to keep that in mind. That's coming from me and my personal experience working with the district. I no longer represent them, but I think it's a very well-run organization. Unfortunately, our trustee here, our representative, is our own city manager, Isaiah, and I'm sure he keeps him in line down there. And speaking of Isaiah, I just wanted to share with him a birthday thought I had one day when I woke up and realized I was 55 years old, and that was going on 12 years ago. I thought, God, you know, I realize I am finally getting old or reaching my golden years, because I was finally older than the President of the United States, who was Obama at that time. at that time. I was older than the state I was born in, which is Hawaii. And then I thought, I'm really getting there because now if I was a house in Rancho Mirage, I would be eligible to be designated as a historical resource.
If our city, if our city attorney thinks that 50 or so is old, I got a lot of news for you, kid. Seems pretty young to me.
We won't go there. In any event.
What's the story about I have a pair of shoes older? I have shoes older than you. That's a line.
Well, certainly, Steve, you are our historic resource and we value great, everything you do greatly.
And I heard some comments in here about, you know, wanting to be Isaiah. You know, I, after seeing what he goes through, I wouldn't want to be Isaiah for a minute. Not here at City Hall. That's all. He's a hard worker.
Since I am Isaiah, I will let you all go home.
Okay. Enough of that. So the city council now is going to recess into closed session to consider three potential cases. There are significant exposure to litigation items that's pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9. One involves a former unhappy employee. Legally, we call them disgruntled employees, but that person, somebody wants to call them unhappy, that person is unhappy. We also are going to meet to discuss this boilerplate letter we received from this Malibu law firm alleging that our citywide elections are in violation of the California Voter Rights Act. I'd like to point out that the city his firm is located in is not subject to the Voter Rights Act and apparently he hasn't challenged them. And that's the city of Malibu. And his firm specializes in bankruptcy, corporate governance, mergers and acquisitions, trade secrets, patents, trademarks and copyrights, and there's no mention of any of his participation or experience of voter rights. So I'd like to point that out. I know that other cities have pointed that out as well.
How about ambulance chasing? Is that down there at all?
Well, that's, that sounds like what he's doing. In any event, and the third item has to do with Colony Mobile Home Park. As you know, the park owner's attorney has threatened to file a lawsuit against the city. However, I'm anticipating we'd be able to settle that case. I can go on record saying that because everybody's been talking about that out there. Next, we are going to, the council's going to confer legal counsel regarding three potential initiation of litigation items pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D4. We're not required to report why there's potential initiation of litigation. And the last item involves existing litigation and that's going to be pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9D1. And the case name is unspecified because the disclosure of the case name may jeopardize existing settlement negotiations. That's it.
That's it. Okay. Thank you, Steve. That really brings us up to date. So I think we're finished with just about everything. It was a busy day, but it was a wonderful day and, and we're also happy to be able to celebrate with our city manager and we wish him all the very best for many, many more happy and healthy years. And let, just let you know also that we will not be meeting at our regular time for our city council on January 2nd because it's close to the New Year's Day and we, our next meeting will be January 16th. So I would like to wish everyone out there a merry, merry Christmas, a happy, happy Hanukkah, a happy Kwanzaa, a happy and healthy New Year and a happy and healthy Chinese New Year to everyone and look forward to seeing everyone again on January 16th. Thank you so much. We are now adjourned.